Good evening. Tonight, April fifteenth, or January fifteenth, sorry, looking ahead to sixteenth, looking ahead too far. I'd like to welcome everybody here. I'm Bob Ingram, your chair tonight. To my right is my secretary, Dave Tomlin. Unfortunately, my vice chair is not able to be here tonight. I'd like to welcome everybody. Everybody here have an opportunity to speak. I would like to mention, if you do step up to the podium, you can do so in order. Please identify yourself by name and your address. You'll be limited to about five minutes of conversation. Direct it all to the commission. I'd also like to caution everybody to turn off your cell phones as it could interfere with our audio communication. I'm sure you wouldn't want a voicemail ending up on our audio. As it is, we only have public hearing tonight. We'll start with, I mean, we'll have a regular meeting agenda, but there's no action items. We'll start with Roqueau. Commissioner Tomlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hepner.
Here.
Michael Berry.
Here.
Dunlap.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Tomlin, here. Ingram.
Present.
Maynes.
Here.
Garrington.
Here.
Schilling.
Here.
We have a corner, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Tomlin. We'll start off with the first public hearing. It's Case REZ 24-01, the request of the City of Davenport for, to rezone approximately thirty-two acres. Hang on a second. I don't have it up on my screen completely. Thirty-two acre, thirty-one point nine acres of land at 2,800 Eastern Avenue from S-IC, Institutional Campus District, to C-T, Commercial Transitional District, and Planned Unit Development. Matt?
Thank you. So this rezoning case consists of the Annie Wittenmeyer property. So this is a local and a national landmark that's currently owned and operated by the City of Davenport. So this image here, Eastern Avenue, is on the bottom of the page, and then so north would be the right half. So the complex consists of the Aquatic Center, Davenport Junior Theater, various social services and human resources facilities occupy these tenant spaces. Off to the south is Genesis East Medical Center. The opposite side of the street would be Oakdale Cemetery, and then to the north, there is City Park. So today's petition would be to rezone the entire thirty-two acre facility, so just south of Twenty-Ninth Street, along Eastern Avenue, and then bounded by the railroad tracks. So the property is currently zoned S-IC, so that stands for Institutional Campus. The surrounding area zoned open space, which is a cemetery and parkland. Then there is some commercial transitional just to the east of Eastern Avenue and Twenty-Ninth Street, and then Genesis East Medical Center is also zoned Institutional Campus. Our future land use map identifies the property as civil and institutional, surrounded by parks and recreation and residential general. So purpose statements, so the SIC district, it's really meant to encourage a comprehensive approach to development by significant institutions within the city. So that would be city-owned property as well as universities or healthcare institutions So it's meant to further the policies of the comprehensive plan, permit appropriate institutional growth within boundaries of the district while minimizing adverse impacts to surrounding neighborhoods, provide balance and stability to the institutions to allow them to grow and adapt, and to encourage a preparation of land use plan for higher development intensity that allows them to grow within our community. So the proposal would be to rezone to CT, which is a Commercial Transitional District. This zoning district is intended to accommodate low-intensity, limited office service and retail uses that may serve as a transition piece between residential neighborhoods and abutting commercial or light industrial, and it does encourage mix of uses. So this district was selected because it does allow for housing. The SIC district does not allow for residential. In addition to the base zoning, there is also proposal for Plan Unit Development. So the purpose of Plan Unit Development, it's a special approval process that's meant to encourage a more creative and flexible development of land than might otherwise be possible in that base zoning district. So it's meant to encourage a creative approach to the use of land that results in better development and design, to allow for the design developments that are architecturally and environmentally innovative, and to coordinate architectural styles, building forms, and structures. And in this case, to also serve as a layer of historic preservation for the campus. So the city is currently in negotiations to do a conditional purchase agreement with a developer. So this map shows the proposed site plan. So this would be the preliminary plan. So following the rezoning process, the applicant would come back with a final development plan for a separate vote and action. I'll let the developer come back when I'm done speaking to go into the site plan in more detail. So city staff did provide tables outlining the existing uses of each building on the campus. I believe there's twenty-seven structures. So the proposal would be to convert structures into residential housing, some of which would be affordable housing, some of which would be senior housing, and then potentially market-rate housing as well. Davenport Junior Theater would be allowed to continue in the theater building under this proposal, and the City of Davenport would maintain ownership of the Aquatic Center, so that would continue to function as it currently is today. And then they've also provided a table showing parking layout and configuration with the new proposal. So in terms of public input, city staff notified property owners within 200 feet of the subject property of tonight's public hearing, as well as the neighborhood meeting that was held here on Thursday. So approximately thirty members of the public attended Thursday's meeting. Comments largely pertain to the future of Davenport Junior Theater. There also were comments on traffic, the types and quality of the housing, as well as comments on the historic preservation aspect of the structure. So city staff posted a notice in Quad City Times and have received several emails, which were included in the packet and will be provided at the next meeting when a vote is taken. So for tonight, the recommendation is to hold the public hearing, and staff will provide a formal recommendation at the February sixth Plan Zone Commission meeting, which is actually scheduled to be held at the Police Department Community Room, not this room.
Thank you, Matt. Commissioners, at this time, do you have any questions for staff? Seeing none. Would Mr. Berger be available? Sorry, you're in the shadows back there. Didn't see you. Could you explain what's going on in front of us?
Sure. So Bruce Berger, Community and Economic Development. So the city, I'll let the developer tell you more about their plans, maybe the backstory leading up to this. So the city has owned this facility since the late 1970s, and it did start with a lot of social service use. Obviously, you can, you've probably seen the history or read the history, some great historic fabric and structures that are still there, and it is a historic district. So unfortunately, though, over the years, the city hasn't been able to have the revenue to maintain it or use it very well. And so unfortunately, it, there's a lot of deferred maintenance that has occurred at the property. So for some time, the city had been looking, as the owner had been looking for perhaps a potential reuse of the campus. And approximately five, six years ago, a number of developers were invited, took a tour, went into the tunnels. And we did have one interested developer at the time, and ultimately, they weren't able to, I think they had enough other things going in, or they weren't able to really find a way to make it financially work. And so it kind of was sitting for a bid. And then fast forward to, we have a interested developer who has a lot of history, and it's the one before you, and they approached with this campus plan that would try to preserve and would preserve really all of the structures there. I will note, there are a couple of structures that are not shown on this developer's concept map that have been approved by the Historic Preservation Commission to be demolished. So one of those was damaged here over the winter, and another one has been a parking structure over by the 23 parking spaces there on Wittenmeyer Lane. So those two are, exempting those two out, which will likely be demolished here before any transfer would occur, this is the plan that would retain all of the structures on the campus. So that was important for the city to look at, working with the existing tenants as best as possible. The developer plans, and he can talk more, they can talk more about their plans, but they checked a lot of the boxes. Unfortunately, as has been mentioned, the fast timeframe for this and moving it forward for your consideration, as well as the city council, is to consider what happens with the junior theater use. So we've tried to negotiate a leaseback term to be able to preserve as many options as we can, but likely that's something that's going to need to work with other community partnerships. We do have some time to work through those, but that was probably the biggest thing that we heard from the neighborhood meeting along with the traffic, so. With that said, I guess that is still moving forward, so it has not been agreed to. There is a public hearing in front of city council tomorrow night, which is on the proposed conveyance. The conveyance period would be roughly at least a year to allow the developer time to secure funding, and if they are able to secure funding, then it would be roughly about a six-month window before the transfer would happen. So we're looking at roughly mid-2025 would be the transfer date, and then I believe the developer hopes to begin construction yet that year and complete by the end of '26. So this is still out of ways, but it is moving. There's kind of a hurry up and wait. I think the developer team can share that with you, but that's the ownership standpoint.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Questions? Would Commissioner have any questions for Mr. Berger? Don't.
You're on the way.
Mr. Commissioner Hepner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hey, Bruce.
Hi.
I just had one question on the Sanders Building. Would that remain operational? Family Resources Plan solid?
Is that building E, I believe, right?
Building A.
Oh, A, okay. Building A, yeah. The plan, they plan to remain in operation there. They've indicated that they may not use quite all of the building. I think the developer can confirm, but I think the concept plan might be a little mislabeled, so it would be a shared use. I think they would be able to squeeze some units in, but Family Resources would remain, I believe, in the wings.
So they would mix the occupants of Family Resources that are housed there with others in the community?
And that might be a better question for the developer, yeah. But the plan is for Family Resources to remain in all of their occupied units on campus, and then the developer can share with you where they plan to convert some buildings to housing.
Okay, thanks, Bruce. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have right now.
Thank you. Commissioner Michael Berry.
So I guess I'm curious if, for some reason, this zoning wasn't to go through, or this deal were to fall through, as the owner, as with the city being the owner, is there a, what percentage of the property is, like, able to be rented out or leased to tenants at the moment, or, you know, could you speak to that?
Oh, I'm not sure I can give you exact info, but I'll give you a broad brush. Currently, five of the 28 units are under lease, and then four buildings, six buildings, I think, are currently vacant, including the two that are about to be demolished. The remaining buildings are controlled, currently occupied by the city, and maybe roughly half of those are storage or in temporary use, that are maybe at their highest investment use. So in terms of could they be leased out again, that's the tougher part. I can tell you that the larger structures are not, that are vacant are not in a condition that they could be guaranteed at all, so there's a significant investment needed.
Thank you. Commissioner Schilling.
Thank you. Just a couple things to clarify. Would all of the buildings then go to the buyer, and then we would have to, for example, the Junior Theater or where Human Sources is right now, would they have to be leased back to the new owner?
Yeah, so the city, it's one parcel now, right? So the large parcel. The city would retain the Aquatic Center, if and if, so there's several things. If the, I guess to your, first on the zoning point, if the zoning, I'm sure I might be actually answering your question, if the zoning did go through, the PUD's status of it would allow the city's current operation of it as, I guess, as it stands, from the standpoint that technically junior, the theater operation is not allowed typically in a, you guys can correct me on this, I'm not sure if it's technically allowed in the CT, but because it's included in the PUD that's being proposed, it could, it could continue on. So if the date, if the deal didn't happen, if the rezoning doesn't happen, if the funding for the developer doesn't materialize, those things would, would not be negatively impacted by the rezoning. To your question, though, I think on the, the city's, I'm sorry.
So I guess my question would be, so we transfer this to the new owner, but you have, like, the Junior Theater, and then the city has to lease that back.
Right, right.
And will the city be able to afford to lease that back when we're already having a difficult time maintaining the buildings, and for how long could that lease go?
Right, sorry, I forgot. Too many, too many questions I'm answering. So the leaseback, the way it's currently negotiated, if it would be approved by city council, would have the current building labeled Junior Theater and three cottages immediately adjacent, so buildings fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen would be able to be leased back to the city for a dollar. So that's the way financially it works. However, just to be noted, and this came up in the neighborhood meeting too, the three cottages, currently the Junior Theater program operates, I think, all of the cottages, and so, and going forward, even though there's a five-year leaseback for a dollar on the Junior Theater, the cottages would only be leased back for roughly six months because of the desire to convert all ten of those and maintain the campus housing feel. And so, so it's been raised, you know, what would happen, I mean, in theory, the good news is the city could lease back for a dollar financially the theater building, if that would be viable. But one of the things that I think our parks staff are wrestling with and will need to talk through with Junior Theater folks, with the Davenport Community Schools and others, is what does the long-range future look like? This campus would have been difficult to maintain going into the future for the theater operation without a major investment of dollars. So it's, this is a good prompt to look at what the future does look like. If it turns out that the project doesn't move forward, we will have maybe started that review process and can maybe look to the future of Junior Theater at a more viable site, or perhaps reinvesting in this site. So I mean, that is still on the table if it doesn't happen. But in terms of leaseback financially, we could continue on for a temporary period until we find a better solution for Junior Theater.
Can the Junior Theater be excluded from the deal?
So, again, I keep saying I want the developer talking, actually, sorry, some of your thunder, but the theater building is not actually planned to be used by the developer. It's not convertible to housing, I think, in their minds, and, and so the question would be that will probably be leased, could be available to other folks in the community going forward. Could, if the Junior Theater function, and since I'm not, there may be others here more experienced to be able to answer that question, but I'm not sure that it's viable to do the Junior Theater there without a number of the other buildings, because it does take up a lot of space, and it wasn't built for all the modern, modern theater use. So the viability going forward might be a little difficult to try to siphon that piece off, but it's possible. I think anything is possible, it's just we're at the very beginning stages of this.
Commissioner Maynes.
Thank you. I'm just following up on that question about Junior Theater. I am wondering if the city and the purchaser, developer discussed possibly the city retaining ownership of the Aquatic Center and the Junior Theater with the remaining portions of the property to be transferred.
Yes, the issue came up regarding a economies of scale issue for the developer, and so you need to have a certain number of housing units to be able to make a project viable from their end, and similarly from our end, as mentioned, it's not really ideal to have ten cottages and have all those separated functions, and the heating plant and utilities servicing all of those are what is a major cost factor going forward. So one would have to, if the city were to retain that for that use, we would have to find the funding to be able to do that. So we had, even going back five, six years, we had that discussion with our city council about what the long-term use would be.
But I'm assuming the city would be receiving substantial compensation from selling this property to the developer, no?
Being donated.
Okay. Thank you.
If I may, if I may, I mean, most of, what I primarily do is in the realm of development, and generally, when you have a property that needs significant maintenance, significant investment, the developers typically will need to have a significant TIF or other assistance from the city, and that's often difficult for cities to come up with the cash to be able to do that. So in this case, the, what was negotiated was a development agreement that would say, if you can do something great with the property, we can donate it, because it does avoid us having to put millions of dollars into the property.
Okay. I see the picture.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Berger. Would the developer, Mr. Case, like to step forward? Ailes, Mr. Ailes?
Hello, my name is Chris Ailes, and I am the developer of the proposed site.
Could you speak up a little bit?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Again, my name is Chris Ailes. I am the developer of this proposed site. If you don't mind, I'm going to walk over and kind of point.
Would you like the laser pointer?
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Sure.
Thank you.
Otherwise, we can't pick you up on the audio.
So as Bruce mentioned, the Aquatic Center, right in here, yeah, so the, I believe this is a northeast, which would be retained by the city. The rest of the parcel would eventually be separated by replanted into three parcels. The first, including the Junior Theater, and these buildings right in here, where we would seek to relocate all the different agencies, Family Resources, and Community Action with their Head Start program. This would retain, it would be set aside as one parcel leasing those spaces long-term. The cottages here, and then everything up on this side of this road, would be a second parcel where we would put about fifty workforce housing apartments. And then everything over on this side of the campus would be another fifty senior apartments. So approximately 100 apartments in total. The, all, as Bruce mentioned, and I think the city staff mentioned, the entire project would have no, excuse me, no planned new construction. All the work to the buildings would follow the National Park Service's standards on historic preservation, and it'd also follow the city's standards on building codes, and then we're going to be using funding through the Iowa Finance Authority, so we'll also be subject to the state's standards on building codes. General overview, perhaps, rather than me rambling on about things that may or may not matter to you, I'll just offer up for questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Hepner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Ailes, it's good to see you up here. Are you going to be also looking for historic tax credits?
Yes. The project would be funded utilizing the Iowa Finance Authority's Affordable Housing Tax Credit. That's one of the reasons for the timeline. We would submit those applications in April. The awards are made in September, and then we think we'd be ready to close by spring, as Bruce mentioned. And that allows us to then be completed by December of '26, which is a program requirement of the state's. In addition to the Affordable Housing Tax Credit, we would be applying for federal and state historic tax credits. There'd be conventional financing and private equity around the funding.
It's an ambitious project, but I know you're up to it. You've done plenty of projects around the community.
Well, thank you. I do have a passion for it.
You do. So it's nice to see you up here. I was afraid it was going to be an out-of-town person, so I'm glad to see you here. One question I've got is the northeast corner of the property. There's a wetland up there now. I'm assuming that is not buildable.
That would be up in this area right here?
Correct.
Yes.
Do you have any plans to develop that?
No.
I don't think you can.
No, I wouldn't even try.
Okay, good. That's what I wanted to hear.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Hepner. Commissioner Garrington.
Yes, the southern section with the 100 apartments, 50 being senior, 50 being workforce?
Correct.
Okay. Would any of those be low rent?
Yes, the, if I jump in, the Affordable Housing Tax Credit Program through the Iowa Finance Authority would generally restrict the incomes to 60% of the area median income.
Right.
Because we have to collect our rents. Typically, people that make less than 40% of the area median income can't afford the rent. So we're looking at a slice, if you will, of the economy or the market, 40 to 60% of the area median income is our tenant base.
Is that senior or is that the workforce?
Both.
Both.
Both. And then the scoring for these funds that we'll apply for in September gives preference if we set aside a number of units at market rate, and so there's a good chance that we would set aside up to 25% of all the apartments at market rates with no income restrictions.
Okay. I'm a little worried about that, having seen what's going on over at the former college.
Mary Chris.
Mary Chris. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Garrington. Any additional questions of the developer at this time? Seeing none. I appreciate it. Mr. Ailes?
Thank you.
At this time, I will open the mic up to anybody in the audience that would like to step forward with questions, concerns, thoughts, either yea or nay, in favor or against. Please identify yourself by name and address.
Hi, my name is Anne McGlynn. I live in Davenport at 3,009 Grand Avenue. I think it's about seven or eight blocks, actually, from here. Mossel, the founder and executive director of Tapestry Farms, and we happen to be a tenant on this property. If you look where it says 10 for the parking spots, Building G is where we're at. I have a very supportive, but a little bit complicated response to this project. I work with refugees, and we grow food. And professionally, I spend a significant amount of my time, and my colleagues spend a significant amount of their time, ensuring that the families we serve are housed, that, and that they have stable, affordable housing. All of our families, all of our families work, most have children. This is our most difficult and most expensive task for our organization. So that leads me to say I am highly, highly supportive of this project. It will make me very sad to leave our beautiful little cottage. If you are familiar with the campus, it's this beautiful stone and brick building. We've rented it from the city for about a year. We spent some time and finances renovating it, and it's gorgeous, and we love it. We grow food on the campus, but it's such a beautiful place, and I believe that people deserve to not just be housed, but to be housed. And I believe that people deserve to not just be housed, but to be housed in a beautiful place. So my dear colleagues at the junior theater definitely have a bigger challenge. I do want to make sure that the city takes care of them throughout this process. They're a vital piece of our community. But we are, I won't say happy to move, because we love our place. But the day that I get to drive by Building G and see someone living there in a beautiful space will make me very happy. I also want to make sure too, and this isn't under your purview, but the city staff who are now assigned to the Annie Whitmire campus are amazing. They took, they take really good care of us. They're hugely responsive. And so I'll tell this to city council too, but I really want to make sure that those staff members are taken care of through this process. So as a neighbor, and as a current tenant, and someone who believes that all people deserve to have a safe, affordable, and if possible, beautiful place to live, this project is a dream. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm William McGivern, seventeen twenty-five East Rush Home. We're concerned, we're gonna put cars in that area. Eastern Avenue is really bad at that particular spot, right there. We're concerned that cars will come through our neighborhood, like when the bridge was out, only twice as bad. We want you to consider the traffic on Eastern Avenue, basically. And we could, you know, talk more, but I think you understand where we're coming from. Our neighborhood, people cut through their twenty-five mile an hour limit, and they think they can go twice that fast. So it's a family neighborhood, and we moved in because it was nice. That was zoned, there was never gonna be anything there. So we are concerned. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Next?
My name is Joseph Thomas, I live at twenty-two thirty-five Marquette Street. I'm a former student of Junior Theater. I attended it from age five to about age fifteen. I wish I could say I graduated the program, but I stepped away before the end of my time in high school here. Unfortunately, we are seeing a national trend that the arts are being removed from the schools. We need community programs like Junior Theater in order to allow arts to be in our communities. We don't get artists that win awards, like the Golden Globes, the Emmys, all those award shows that have happened over the past couple of weeks, unless they are nurtured from a young age. Unfortunately, Junior Theater would probably not be able to survive in its current capacity without the cottages along with the theater itself. Those need to have a symbiotic relationship. I have been a part of other programs around the Quad Cities, specifically musical, that had problems when their scene shop was separated from their theater, their costume shop was in a whole different city than their theater. By having that close physical location between the two objects, the cottages where the classes can be held, storage is available, administration can take place, and the theater itself to actually put on the performances, those facilities then can survive and be beneficial to each other. My concern with this project is the cottages. I also know that the rest of the buildings on the campus need revitalization. And if they have to go through private services or private companies to get that revitalization, I agree. But the cottages might need to be separated out in a different parcel. If the aquatic center can already be separated out in this agreement, why couldn't the cottages? Additionally, my question to the developer would be, according to the other slide, each cottage would be two homes, if I read that slide correctly. These cottages are not large. At best, I'm guessing a thousand square feet. I'm not sure, it's been quite a while since I've been in these facilities. The facilities themselves would have to be taken back to the studs. If I do recall correctly, there's only one bathroom in each cottage. How much additional plumbing, how much additional work would be necessary to put into these facilities to turn them into duplexes, or to turn them into multifamily facilities each? My concern with the proposal is that each cottage is not actually large enough to meet the expectation that was shown. And would that, as noted by Bruce, the economies of scale change, and this project not be as vital? Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
I'm Louis Holmes, I live at seventeen fifty East Rush Home Street. When you showed the view of East Rush Home, my house is at the RU. I bought my house July of two thousand seven. One of the reasons why I bought it, I stopped at the house several times, one of the things I appreciated was the fact that it was quiet. Now, I can appreciate, hey, I want everyone to have the ability to lay their head someplace, someplace warm, and get all that. But after the smoke clears and the dust settles, I'll be there at that house. And my biggest concern is the multifamily dwellings have lived in several spots here in the Quad Cities. And each one of the multifamily dwelling areas tend to go to pot after a while. And I can appreciate tax dollars here and there, I get that part, but imagine you living in your own homes, resting out on your back deck, and praying that it's quiet. This development, I'm concerned, that it's gonna bring about a lot of noise, and a lot of traffic, and it's gonna disrupt my quiet place. Over the past five years, my property taxes have increased sixty-four to seventy thousand dollars, and still I stay. I say no, and I pray that you say no, because I do want folks to be able to lay their head somewhere. But I don't want this development to happen, bringing a lot of traffic and noise, because at some point, people are not laying down. They're not sleeping, and that's when they're moving around. And if you're in a place where you're nowhere near that, you get to watch it on TV. I don't want to be able to walk out of my front door and see what you guys see on the news. So I can appreciate it. I want people to have affordable housing. But that's not, I bought that house thinking that it would never happen. And I'll, and I'll say it to anybody, you know, I want folks to have something, someplace, but not right there. And however way that sounds, that's how it's, that's how it is. And at some point, I'd like to be able to sell my home, and I'd like to collect all of the equity that I've worked my ass off to get, and that I've earned. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Next?
Good evening. Kristen Meyer, twenty-seven oh-one Sheridan Street. Joe, I remember you from when you were a kid, nice to see you. I've been with Junior Theater for forty-nine years. I was a student. My kids have been in Junior Theater. My grandkids have been in Junior Theater. And while the Emmys and Golden Globes and everything are lovely, and it's always exciting when we have someone who does, and they have gone on to that level, what we're excited about is contributing to the community with people who can get up and speak, like Joe did tonight, like any of these JT kids could get up and address you in a professional way. They can think on their feet. They can do all of the wonderful things that we want people to be able to do in our society, to go to a job interview, to go to a college interview, and to be able to be those contributing numbers. For us, it's not about winning awards. We have a non-competitive dance program, two hundred and fifty kids, and a theater program. We offer so much to the community. I, my, my main job besides supporting Junior Theater and helping out with costumes, I am the general manager of one of the hotels here in the Quad Cities. And I'm a homeowner, my kids are all homeowners. I never set foot at a college. I didn't go to trade school. I learned, a lot of what I learned about working hard and talking to people, communication, from Junior Theater. I worked there as a kid, and I know the benefits. And I hope that those are the things that you consider as we move forward with this. If something would happen, that the rezoning is done, and the project is not able to be funded, which I, because I'm sure Mr. Ailes has done all of his work, are we then having to go back and rezone again so that we can stay where we are? Or is the city going to be looking before then to a home that will allow us to contribute in a way the schools can't do? And I certainly hope that I, you know, after seventy-two years and being there to celebrate the seventieth, I'd love to be around to see who's doing this and running the place for a hundredth, because I hope to live to that one. But I would ask that those are the things that you consider as you think about the impact of Junior Theater. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Brad Clevenger, I live at eighteen twenty-three East Rush Home. We've been there since fifteen. We bought in that neighborhood because it's beautiful, it's quiet, no neighbors behind us. It's fantastic, it's like living in the country. We have endured a lot of traffic because of the bridge outage, and we understand that. It's a detour, we understand. So I will get with my alderman to see what we can do about speeds, traffic signs, anything like that. Some of the things that were mentioned about revitalizing this, and you gotta follow the standards of all the history and things, but you built the Aquatic Center on that land, and there wasn't anything followed about the history and preserving things the way they were. I don't understand how that got passed through, but yet if you ask them to build other permanent housing or anything on that location, that they can't because they gotta follow the guidelines. So Junior Theater is one that's always been around. I dabbled in that a little bit when I was a kid. They don't have the space right now that they need. If you take the cottages away from them, all they have is a theater. If they leave the theater, they're boarding it up and leaving it just as it is. It's just gonna rot away. There won't be anything there. They have no plan for it. They can't do anything with it because they gotta meet the historical society's guidelines. That's all they're gonna do with it, mothball it. Junior Theater's gonna have to go somewhere. If you can't see that now, I don't know what you're looking at. Parking, parking is just those parking spots along the very front of Marquette. That's all Junior Theater's gonna have. Right now, Junior Theater can park anywhere. They fill that lot down at the Aquatic Center, as they do. So I'm not sure that we are actually making a plan rather than fast-tracking something that's ambitious. I get it that it's going to help preserve it, but the city's giving it away. There's not gonna be any taxes put on this property for ten years? Where do the tax dollars come from? Because my taxes have gone up drastically over the years. We couldn't get an answer on what's gonna happen to our taxes if this goes tax-free for ten years. The traffic, no traffic study. How do you rezone an area and not have a traffic study? How do you make it commercial and not have a sidewalk in front, with no plan to put a sidewalk in front? That is a very busy road. And it is very difficult to get out from East Rush Home onto Eastern. We have a stop sign, they don't. The stop sign at the corner is a lot of traffic from the hospital. That is a main thoroughfare from Kibberly to Locust. They talk about Jersey Ridge. Jersey Ridge doesn't access Locust. So I'm surprised that they haven't done a traffic study before they decided that they wanna put residential housing in there. They're gonna zone it so that it can be housing, but they don't wanna call it residential housing, but yet they just said, we're gonna have residential housing in there. So how can we call it residential housing and say it's not zoned for resident housing? That was never in the plan. It's a nice, quiet neighborhood. You're getting rid of some good assets that are there. So I just wish they would pump the brakes a little bit, think about the whole thing, rather than have to fast-track it to get the money approved and get everything taken care of. It's going to impact a lot of people in that neighborhood. So I appreciate the consideration and your time, so hopefully we can come to an agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
My name is Caitlin Mars, I live at two eight zero two seven two thirty Street Leclerc. While I am not a resident of Davenport, I have been going to Davenport Junior Theater since I was nine years old, and I'm deeply regretting that I didn't start earlier. One of the considerations for continuing Junior Theater not at its current campus was incorporating it into the Davenport School System. I think that this is an okay option, but we have classes that start at the age of three. Our Broadway classes help teach students how to interact with each other, and that's not something that you're gonna get starting at junior high-level schools when you introduce theater to these levels. And then, since I've been at Junior Theater for so long, I'd like to introduce to you some of the aspects that go into just a single class session there. This session, we have over thirty classes, and each class is full of kids, at least seven kids in every class. And for all of our theater classes, they get a full set. Every student gets costumes, and every play or musical theater number gets props. And right now, we have a whole cottage full of thousands of costumes. We have a whole cottage full of props. And we have another cottage full of tables and flats and all of these other things that need to go into productions for students. And while I think that it is okay for us to leave this area, we need to be able to continue what we're doing. We reach thousands of students every year, including me. I still take classes at Junior Theater, and I still participate in the programs because they are so impactful. They have me up here talking to you guys. And so while we do have a theater available to us under this plan, we will not be able to use it logically. We have fifty parking spaces dedicated to Junior Theater under this new plan. We have theater full of three hundred seats, just the staff would fill up the fifty parking spaces. We cannot fill a theater for main stage productions or classes with fifty parking spaces, that's just not logical. And without the other facilities to store all of these costumes and props and set pieces for our classes or our main stage productions, it's not possible for us to use the theater space. So I just ask that you consider all of this and give us the space that we need, because we do have an impact. And you can see, we have a lot of Junior Theater kids here in the audience today, and we care, and we really want to see it continue. So thank you.
Thank you for your time. Next?
My name is Scott Tonnecleff. I live at seven eighteen Holmes Street in Bettendorf, Iowa. I was not going to speak here, but I thought if the lady from Leclerc had the courage, I could too, because I am a former Junior Theater student circa nineteen sixty-one, and I can tell you that the props and the costumes that we had back then were no near as elaborate, but the quality was not as elaborate either. I was, of course, there before, I predate the theater just about. I only hope that the city knows what they have in terms of a quality amenity for this area. I hope too that they realize it will be rough, maybe not impossible, but rough, to substitute with what they have. I'm also an historic preservationist, and I recognize the importance of infill, but it is equally important, at least, to be able to retain an amenity of the quality of the Davenport Junior Theater. I've seen it evolved. I mean, in nineteen sixty-one, I'll tell you, it wasn't much, and I quit after a few weeks because I didn't wanna sacrifice my time for cartoons. I got no big regrets about this, but I'm a firm believer that my involvement with Junior Theater thereafter, and subsequently, has helped. And I think to be able to point to that for people looking in the area as an amenity is something that can be very, very compelling for students, for grad students. And I know this is not about chloroforming Junior Theater, but it's about recognizing its its importance to the community and to the region and to be able to say, maybe we can't do what's here, but maybe with some imagination and finesse, we can find something better. It's a possibility. You all know where Boozy's is downtown? That was where junior theater was when I came. We've improved substantially since then, and I think they can go forward, particularly with the quality of students and the staff that they have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hello, my name is Emily Baker. I'm actually from Arc Island, thirty-five Berkshire Drive, but I grew up in junior theater, and I do think it's interesting that the city wants to preserve the history when I think that Davenport Junior Theater is such a huge part of that history. We are the second oldest children's theater in the, in the U.S. And actually, for the seventieth anniversary, I got to attend it with my grandfather, who was a stu-, one of Mary Nyswander's first students. It's, I think, not only is it a huge part of our history, but now the, the theater actually has their own museum, which they continue to add to, and they have put so much into. So, and I, I do want to agree that I, I think that I'm not totally against, like, Davenport Junior Theater moving, but I do think it's very important that it is considered so that we don't lose that huge part of our history. I think it's very important to the community as a whole, and we are, we, I think, contribute a lot to a lot of other parts of the community, so thank you.
Thank you. Next. Anybody else? Final call. Commissioners, any questions of staff, the developer, or Mr. Berger?
Hi, my name is Tamara Holmes. I live at seventeen fifteen on East Rush Home Street in Davenport. So this area is my neighbor, and I can say that junior theater and-
Can I ask you to speak up a little more, please?
Oh, sorry about that. So I can say that junior theater and all of the resources that are there have been good neighbors. We have not had any issues. The other night when we were here, the developer spoke about that after maybe five years that the city would have the opportunity to purchase the property back. City said that they were not interested in purchasing this property back, which kind of unsettling, but I understand it. But the question that looms after that is, who will buy it? And how will they maintain the property? If it's historical in value, will they maintain that? Once you start moving people in and moving people out, will that property maintain its historical value? If it's an expensive undertaking, those are things that I just had questions on and wanted to know, what's the plan after the five years of turning the project back over? Will it be listed for resale if the city's not interested in purchasing it? Or will the developer keep it and maintain it to the status that they would like to have it? That's my thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Final call for questions, statements? See you, Dan. Oops, sorry, Commissioner Garenton.
I have a question for the developer and the owner, or prospective owner. The, as you update the buildings, straighten them up, clean them up, bring them up to the historical standards, I understand doing it to the fifteen cottages, fifteen? The cottages. Will you also be updating the church, the theater building as well?
No, we will not be doing anything with the theater.
Okay. Just a question I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Garenton. Hang on just a second, Mr. Alves, just in case. Commissioner Hefner?
You're just the man I want to talk to. You've heard a bunch of this at the meeting, and you heard a bunch of it tonight. Is there an agreement or some, some way we can preserve some of the cottages to enable junior theater to thrive or to write the next chapter? My daughters went there, so it's a pretty special place. Scott Tonnecleff went there, I didn't know that.
And maybe I'm going to make a statement, and then Bruce may want to chime in on it.
Okay.
It's my understanding that in order for the theater to stay there long-term, that there's some deferred maintenance. And not just the buildings where we're going to put the apartments, but there's some deferred maintenance in the cottages, and there's some deferred maintenance in the theater. And so there'd be capital improvements that need to be funded, which the city doesn't have the budget to do so. My personal perspective, it's, and I've done this for many years, I can say this with experience, it costs less money to build a new facility than it does to fix up an old one. I think this is an opportunity for the theater, and I support the theater. I made the statement before, my granddaughters went through the theater. It's a great program. I would hope they look at this as an opportunity to upgrade their facilities and find a new facility somewhere in the future, as opposed to trying to retrofit part of the campus and then make it fit with the senior housing. And that, and the challenge that that creates, both senior and workforce housing, is that we lose some of the economies of scale.
Your, your perform obviously includes these cottages, and you needed to understand-
And it also creates the additional challenge of parking. You know, I could briefly address the parking issue and traffic issue. We developed Meadowcrest, which is out on Fifty-third Street. There's seventy or eighty apartments there, one entrance, and no problems. We've got one, two, three entrances here with a hundred apartments. Now, if we put our apartments in there and you had the theater with all their parking needs and all their traffic at events, that might be a challenge.
Sure.
Long-term, we've made the comment in the document facilitates this, that we're, we're willing to work with them on a transitional basis, give them a couple of years to find a new location. I guess that's my response.
Yeah, appreciate that, Chris. That's all I've got, Mr. Chelton.
Thank you, Commissioner Hefner. Commissioner Schelling?
Thank you. I think, you know, you've answered some of the questions, but I've been listening to everyone here, and it's apparent that the junior theater is a big contributor. Looking at the big picture of what you want to develop, it also seems like it could be a huge contributor to the people that would be living there, the senior citizens and, you know, workforce and their children. So it could be an opportunity for them as well. So it seems like it could make it a tighter community of what you're trying to develop. And I understand that there's parking issues in the cottage. My other question would be, has anyone actually looked at the cottages and what kind of space is actually required in the usage? And have we gone over, if my understanding is correct, we're not using the entire, one of the entire buildings that the city is leasing now for, is it human resources? I don't know how much space there is, but have we really done a study of how we're using the spaces, what kind of space is available? It may not be the cottages right next door. I mean, I don't know. I'm throwing that out there, but it seems like the junior theater could also create cohesion for what you're trying to develop. And it's just a thought and throwing out, but I guess my question to the city and to you, are we thinking outside the box? Or we just, are we really putting effort forward to how we can preserve a gem and make it work and also help the people that we want to move there at the same time?
Thank you. Any final questions or discussions? See, oh, hold on, hold on, hold on. Commissioner Manas?
I, I just want to make sure I understand. The theater building right now, there are no plans for any improvements to that whatsoever. Is that accurate?
That is correct.
So the future of this building is just unknown if the project proceeds?
Yes. Our, our purchase, our purchase includes it for a dollar for the entire campus. We'll lease back at the city's request the theater to them for a dollar. We'll give them the option to buy it at the end of five years if they so choose, and if they don't, then it would be up to us to find a use for it.
I see. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Manas. Final call for questions. I think you're good.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Alves. That will conclude the public hearing for case REZ twenty-four dash zero one. It will return to us, same location, same time, five o'clock on February sixth, with the recommendation from the city.
But in the police department community room.
Yes, sorry, not same place. Over at the police department, their community room, their conference room, just inside the main door. So I apologize for that. It will be same time, but across the street. You're all welcome to attend. You will be able to ask questions at that meeting also, and we will have the recommendation from staff. I will be moving on to case ORD twenty-four dash zero one. It's a request of Chris Crutz to amend table seventeen point zero eight dash one, use matrix of the city of Davenport zoning ordinance to allow bed and breakfast and reception facility as permitted uses in the C dash T commercial transitional zoning district. Matt?
I think Matt's going to wait until the, the audience clears.
And that's fine. That's fine. He got a little carried away.
Okay, so the city of Davenport was approached by a property owner to amend our zoning code to allow bed and breakfast and reception facility in the CT commercial transitional zoning district. So keep in mind that this is a text change, so if approved, that means that all CT zoned property in the city could potentially allow for bed and breakfast and reception facility. So the commercial transitional district intended to accommodate low-intensity, limited-office service and retail uses that may serve as a transition between residential neighborhoods and commercial corridors or maybe light industrial areas, and this does allow for mix of uses. So bed and breakfast. Our zoning ordinance defines a bed and breakfast as a single-family dwelling where a resident or owner provides lodging for a daily fee in guest rooms with no in-room cooking facilities and prepares meals for guests. A bed and breakfast may include dining facilities. So our current zoning code allows for bed and breakfast in our residential districts as a special use. So special uses are reviewed and approved by the zoning board of adjustment, and it's a permitted use in our agriculture district. There are principal use standards outlined in our zoning code for bed and breakfast that help facilitate and potentially mitigate some of the outside impacts to surrounding properties. So as outlined, so bed and breakfast, the exterior of a bed and breakfast must maintain its original appearance as a single-family dwelling, and no parking can be located in the front of the building, so it must continue to look like a residential unit. Cooking equipment is prohibited in each individual guest room. No retail sales are permitted with the exception of ancillary retail-related items, such as souvenirs or postcards. No bed and breakfast may operate as a restaurant. Meals may only be served to registered guests at private events. And then five, one sign is permitted per property, and then there's requirements on size and area. The second component would be to allow for a reception facility in the CT zoning district. So our code defines a reception facility as a facility that provides hosting and rental services of a banquet hall or similar facilities for private events, including weddings, holiday parties, fundraisers, et cetera, where beverages and food are prepared and served on-site or by a caterer to invited guests during intermittent dates and hours of operation. Live entertainment may be provided as an ancillary use as part of the event. However, it's important to note that this is not a restaurant. So current zoning code allows for reception facilities in our single- and two-family zoning districts as a special use, in our neighborhood commercial district and corridor commercial district as a special use. So again, special uses require review and approval from the zoning board of adjustment. It's permitted in our general commercial in our city center, so that would be the shopping mall, North Park Mall. And then it's a special use in our downtown in the village of East Davenport, permitted in Elmore Corners, and our industrial mixed-use zoning district, and then a special use in our agriculture district. So there's also principal use standards associated with this as well, that being a general admission fee or any other monetary donations, so payment at the door for the general public, or entrance is prohibited with the exception of fundraisers or events for nonprofit organizations or churches. And then when allowed in a residential district or agriculture district, minimum lot size of two acres is required. Fifty-foot minimum setbacks are required for reception facilities. So a public notice was published in the Quad City Times. To date, staff has not received any public comments on this request, and we will keep you updated at the February sixth meeting. So tonight's recommendation is to hold a public hearing, and a formal staff recommendation will be provided at the next meeting.
Thank you, Matt. Matt, point of clarification, prior to St. Ambrose being involved, was this formerly a bed and breakfast type facility?
So the property owner that's petitioning this request, I don't believe it was, or what? Okay. Chris, the petitioner is here, might be able to answer that better than I can.
Well-
Are you referring to the specific property or the general overview of the zoning ordinance?
No, that particular property.
Okay.
Before St. Ambrose took over, I thought that was a bed and breakfast prior. And, and I guess my follow-up question then was, if it was allowed, then did the zoning rewrite, maybe Scott can chime in on this, did the zoning rewrite change that ability?
Yeah, the previous code was more flexible on where bed and breakfast is allowed. They were allowed in all commercial districts.
Okay. Okay, I just wanted to bring that point up. I was curious. All right, would the petitioner like to step forward and explain your petition, your project?
Hi, I'm Chris Crutz, and we recently, my wife and I recently purchased, well, St. Ambrose Little Night House. Prior to that was the Bishop's House. And prior to that was just, I think, just the Bishop's House, but a very historical property, and it's our second time purchasing an historic property to preserve and restore and share it with the community. And so we're hoping that by doing this, knowing that it was a bed and breakfast at one time, kind of converting it more into a boutique hotel, something that the community can use for various events or parties, like he said, stated. So that's our intention. If you have any questions, I'd love to give them a shot.
I appreciate your attendance and explained your project. Commissioners, any questions of the petitioner? Commissioner Hefner?
Thanks for coming.
Yeah.
Where exactly is the house located? I'm having a-
On the corner of Brady and Kirkwood.
Brady and Kirkwood.
If I would like to clarify that this is a zoning code change, changes the ordinance, and it's not specific to a piece of property.
Correct, correct.
Okay. Thank you. I know which one it is.
Built eighteen seventy-one. So one hundred and fifty-two years old, fifty-three years old.
Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you. I have a question of staff, actually. I noticed that we currently in CT allow for lodge, meeting hall. What is the difference between a lodge slash meeting hall versus a reception facility?
Give me one moment. So a lodge or meeting hall is usually associated with a paternal order or something like that. Reception facilities are kind of held out for rent. Lodges, sometimes their members can use the lodge similar to- Lodges, sometimes their members can use a lodge similar to a reception facility, but they're not exactly the same. And they have slightly different principal use standards, if I remember correctly.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Dunlop?
Just curious, maybe it's for either one of you. Why not rezone the property to meet the guy versus, you know, completely changing such that it would affect all properties that are in that? What is the thought on that? Can the property, the individual property not be appropriately rezoned?
This is a question for staff.
Yes.
Yeah. So the city has noticed this inconsistency, like I said, with answering chairman. We used to be more flexible on where bed and breakfasts were allowed. I think it's really just an oversight of the Camaro's consulting group that we used when we established where bed and breakfasts were allowed. Our intent, I think, was always to keep them in residential, or commercial districts and not be limited just to residential. There's also fire code that requires sprinkling, which also lends itself more towards commercial districts as well. It's hard for a lot of single-family homes to meet the sprinkling requirements.
This does have a full sprinkler system, so. That Ambrose have put in when they commercialized it.
Commissioners, any final questions before we close Case ORD twenty-four dash zero one? I appreciate your time.
One more, sorry, Mr. Chairman.
It's fine, Commissioner Manus.
I am just wondering if the staff has looked at other locations where we have the CT zone and more or less verified that those locations would be appropriate? You don't see any real conflicts by adding this to the CT zone based on other locations?
No, we haven't done a thorough exam, but there is no concern for conflict. If there are some locations out there that are non-conforming, they can remain in non-conforming. But in general, staff was aware that we would prefer to have these allowed in both commercial and residential.
So although there is a private applicant for this, it's something that could have been put forward by staff as-
Right, it probably could have been and would have been at some time done as an omnibus change, but we, the applicant wasn't, you know, it's unfair to make someone wait an undefined period of time to do an omnibus change.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. I appreciate it. Commissioner Dunlop?
Just one other quick question. So your intention is to make it permitted then within CT or situational?
So the application is to make it a permitted use in the CT zoning district? So staff will provide a recommendation at the next meeting on our opinion whether it should be a special use, permitted use, or remain prohibited.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kreutz. I appreciate your attendance.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Final questions before I close this petition? Seeing none, we will close Case ORD twenty-four dash zero one. It will also be back before us on February sixth, across the street. Final, final case for public hearing is ROW twenty-four dash zero one, Request of the City of Davenport to Vacate a Portion of Unimproved Marquette Street Right-Away Located South of West Seventy-Sixth Street. Matt?
All right, so the portion of right-of-way to be vacated is highlighted and read on the proposed map. So the purpose of this vacation is because the subject land is part of the landfill that was decommissioned in the nineteen seventies, which is located directly to the east. So due to the restrictions on how this area is treated, the construction of a road, in this case being unimproved Marquette Street, is infeasible. So the subject area, it's about three-fourths of an acre. At this point in time, Marquette Street's unimproved from Seventy-Sixth Street down to Sixty-Second Street. There's currently no plans for the city to construct this roadway. It likely would be spurred by development of the property to both the east and west.
And I just would point out that if this is vacated, there's still enough room for the road to go through. We've made accommodating enlargement of the right-of-way for that.
Thank you, Scott. I appreciate that comment.
Thank you. So subject zoning, so the Waste Commission's zoned for open space. You have light industrial on Seventy-Sixth Street, and then you have residential uses currently used as farmland to the south. This area on our future land use map is industry to the east, residential general to the west, and then you have open space and public land along Goose Creek. So right-of-way vacation, it's a two-step process. First is to determine if the right-of-way is needed for public purpose. City believes that there still is adequate right-of-way to the west of this subject area to construct a future Marquette Street. And then second, to negotiate and determine the terms of conveyance to adjacent property owners, which does not require planning zone commission action. In terms of public input, property owners within two hundred feet were notified of tonight's public hearing. To date, staff have not received any comments from abutting property owners. And we'll keep you apprised at the February sixth meeting. So tonight would be to hold the public hearing.
Thank you, Matt. Commissioners, any questions? Seeing none, would anybody in the audience like to speak either in favor of or opposition to this petition?
Hello. Hello, my name is Brian Purcell. I live at sixty-six oh nine Woodland Court. I actually own the property on Seventy-Sixth Street that abuts this. And I wanted to let you know I'm in favor of you eliminating that. I think it would be a good thing to do. I don't think that property needs to be disturbed there for the potential that was sitting there that if you get into it, might cause way more problems than you want, than you want. I would question why you need that anyway, because what I'm putting there is a, is zoned for industrial, probably be a ware, it'll be a warehousing type of area. But anyway, I would favor it. As a matter of fact, I'd like you to get rid of the whole thing, to be honest with you. So anyway, I really don't have any questions. I just want to let you know that I think it's the right step. I don't think you should be messing with that, because who knows what you're going to dig up when you dig there. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Purcell. Anybody else?
How's it going, everybody? My name is Bryce Stalkup. I'm the Executive Director of the Waste Commission of Scott County. So we're the ones bringing this to the table, all obviously in favor of it. Just some history on that. So it is, it was an active landfill, a trench fill in the nineteen seventies. It closed in roughly seventy-eight. At the time, the DNR has statements saying everything was followed and done how things should have been done at that time, which is what predates me pretty, pretty far. The reason we're doing this is in the seventies, the county actually owned that property. In the nineties, that changed, and they sold it to the Waste Commission of Scott County. Brian and I are here representing. They sold it to us for a dollar, basically to manage the property and make sure it's handled as it should be, according to law, and as safe as possible. When that was done in the nineties, it was zoned. And this was, I think, an oversight where that zoning changed. So originally, the line was where we're asking for it to go back to, and there was active material landfill in this area that we're asking for, to basically take that ownership back. So the reason that we're asking for that is if anyone, we don't want a road to be built over that area, digging up waste that exactly, like you mentioned, who knows exactly what was there in the seventies? Also, what this does is it allows anyone who builds next to that property, it just ensures that if they build there, the right measures are taken into place. Because when you're next to a landfill, there could be methane gases that come close to the, you know, to the, anything that may be built. So if you have utility corridors or something like that that were put there, that could be a problem, because that methane would then follow those utility corridors. And with this plan, utility corridors would have to be on the west side of the property and not in the east, abutting that old landfill. We're happy to answer any questions if there are any. Appreciate your time.
Commissioners, any questions? Seeing none, I appreciate your comments and your attendance. Would anybody else like to speak? Final call? Seeing none, that will close Case ROW twenty-four dash zero one, and it too will return to us on February sixth, across the street in the Police Department. We'll move on to our regular meeting agenda. Roll call, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hepner?
Here.
Dunlop?
Here.
Johnson, still present? Ingram?
Present.
Manus?
Here.
Garenton?
Here.
And Schilling?
Here.
We have one.
Thank you. A report of city council activity, Matt?
Nothing at this time.
Secretary's report?
Move the report.
All those in favor of the secretary's report has moved and seconded. Signified by aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. It will remain. Report of comprehensive plan?
Nothing at this time.
We do not appear to have any zoning or subdivision activity. We will move on to future business. Anything, Matt? Scott?
Well, the three items at tonight's public hearing will be on our formal agenda next meeting for staff recommendation and a vote.
Thank you. Any-
Oh, and we'll have two subdivision plats as well.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I thought Laura mentioned something to me today. Communications, anything?
Nothing.
Seeing none?
Move to adjourn.
All those in favor of adjournments, signify by aye?
Aye.
Close, same sign. We are adjourned. Thanks again for your attendance, and please drive safely.